And the council, or in the Thomas Jefferson Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming? McCambo?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Okay, we've got some proclamations.
First one is for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the city of Burlington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Burlington, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at the greatest risk from fire. The United States Fire Department's responded to 369,500 home fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Protection Association. U.S. home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing the majority, that's 84 percent, of all U.S. fire deaths. Whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working. Three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without smoke alarms, or with no working smoking alarms. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half. Many Americans don't know how old the smoke alarms in their homes are, or how often they need to be replaced. All smoke alarms should be replaced at least once every 10 years. The age of a smoke alarm can be determined by the date of its manufacture, which is marked on the back of the smoke alarm. Whereas Burlington firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries throughout, through prevention and protection education, Burlington residents are responsive to public education members, and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their home. Whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Smoke Alarms Every 10 Years." It effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes every 10 years, and determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of manufacture on the back of the alarm. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of Burlington, Iowa, do proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2016, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. We urge all people of Burlington to find out how old the smoke alarms in their homes are, to replace them if they're more than 10 years old, and to participate in many public safety activities and efforts the Burlington Fire Department does during Fire Prevention Week 2016. Signed and sealed this 3rd day of October, 2016, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor, and Fire Marshal Crooks is here and have a few words to tell us about Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week is next week, starts Sunday, October 9th. As Mr. Davidson just read, the theme for Fire Prevention Week this year is "Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Your Smoke Alarms Every 10 Years." A lot of people don't realize that there is a lifespan on those detectors, and it's not that they won't work beyond 10 years, it's that the sensitivity to those smoke detectors aren't as great, and it may only be 50, 60, maybe even 70 percent effective in letting you know early in the event of a fire in your house. On average, seven people die every day across the United States in a home fire. Adults 65 and years of age and over are the highest risk. There have been 31 fire deaths in the state of Iowa so far this year, and that includes the fire death in Keokuk from over this past weekend, which ties the number of fire fatalities that we had in the state of Iowa for all of last year. And we still have three months of the year still to go. Roughly two-thirds of the home fire deaths happen in homes with no working smoke detectors, and the main reason for that is that they have no working batteries. And that is something that we come across on a great deal. We find the detectors, but then we also find the detectors have had the batteries removed, and so they're, it's just like they aren't even there. Cooking equipment is still the number-one leading cause for residential fires. That is across the United States, and that holds true right here in Burlington. We respond more of home fires and as a result of cooking fires, people leaving their kitchen unattended when they have something on the stove. So I'd like to remind some, the residents of the city of Burlington, to do some things. This is the time of year we need to be looking out for these. Number one is to check your smoke detectors, make sure that you have some. If you do not have any working smoke detectors, please call the Fire Department. We'll be more than happy to come out, we'll install them for free. If you need a battery, we'll provide you with a battery. We just received an email today from the State Fire Marshal's Office, and we're getting 185 more smoke detectors, hopefully yet this week, so they'll be free to install into your home. Replace the smoke, or replace the batteries in your smoke detectors. It is that time of year where we just, whether they need it or not, it's just time to replace them. Sit down with your families and practice your escape plans. Planning ahead of time will result in much faster evacuation of your home. But, and just, just take a look around, inspect your homes for general fire safety items, including clearing your exit paths. Many times, myself included, we have a tendency to sit something down thinking, "We'll get to it later," when in fact, later has come, it's time to move that along. One thing I would like to say, we are continuing our Fire Prevention Week in the, in the schools next week. We'll be starting with going out and doing the drills. We are doing our poster contest with the 4th grade class. Bickles, Bickles Bicycles is donating another bicycle this year to our grand prize winner. There are seven elementary schools in the city of Burlington, and all seven will be participating in that. I'd also like to thank the Art Center for doing the judging for us for that poster contest. So, again, thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you, sir.
I also have a proclamation. Whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, children who experience domestic violence are at a higher risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life. Domestic violence, domestic violence rural communities exist as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often under-reported. And whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children, and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and intimate relationships. And whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked to end violence in intimate relationships for more than 37 years through the collaboration, partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens. Our community's achievements should be commended. We must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence, and to prevent future violence in our community. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, hereby proclaim the month of October, 2016, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout the city of Burlington, Iowa, and urge our citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking from our community. Signed and sealed this 3rd day of October, 2016, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor. And we have...
My name is Kristi Dozer. I'm the Executive Director of the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. And while we are somewhat new to the Burlington community, we've been serving victims of domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking for more than 37 years. And what I will say is that Burlington and the larger Des Moines County have been tremendously welcoming. When the Attorney General's Office made the decision to restructure services in Iowa, that was a huge, huge challenge. And we were invited by the YWCA's Domestic Violence Program to apply for this area and really relied on, and we're very, very lucky to have them to champion us being here, and more importantly, to help the transition. It was, it was a tough thing for your community, and we understand and appreciate that, and want to know, want you to know how much we appreciate your welcomes and the support that you give to victims of domestic violence. It's absolutely critical. I want to turn it over for just a couple minutes to Crystal Yatter. She's one of our staff here in Des Moines County, and she's going to talk a little bit about what we do.
All right, I have to stand on my tippy toes here. Hi, I'm Crystal Yatter, and our office here in Burlington is at 1616 Dill Street at Perkins Park. And there's three advocates that work in the office here in Burlington. Myself as the housing specialist. We have Allison Peterson, who is an advocate, and Brad Koenig, who is also an advocate. As far as the work that we do every day, it's different. We never know, I've learnt to do my schedule on pencil, because we never know from day to day what, you know, what phone call we're going to take, and what we need to do. We wear many different hats in our job. One thing we do is medical advocacy, so we might get a call from the hospital stating that there is a woman or a victim in the hospital that has been abused, and that needs an advocate out there to kind of support them through that. We're able to do that with them. We can also do court advocacy. If somebody is wanting to get a no-contact order, we can come to the courthouse with them and go up to the 3rd floor with them, and help them request the paperwork and walk through what the questions are and what they mean. We also can attend the court hearings with them, if they so choose. But more on a day-to-day basis, we, we do so much with our clients. I mean, it's everything from, you know, my, my main job is finding housing here in Burlington for, for my clients or in Des Moines County, which, which is a challenge sometimes. A lot of our clients, a lot of times, come with their own set of issues. You know, domestic violence is also a lot of times associated with alcoholism or drug addiction, so those are all barriers that we try to work through with our clients. Not saying that all clients have those issues, but it's a reality that we do need to work through those issues at times. You know, we're working on them, trying to find employment, trying to further their education, you know, where they're going to get their groceries at next week, who's their network of supports. So really, every day is a, is a different challenge for our victims. And, you know, we try to meet them head-on, and, you know, we do whatever we can to, to help them. And we're very driven to, to their needs. We don't, we don't meet the clients and tell them what we think they should do to better their lives. They know their situations better than we do. Honestly, we can't tell anybody else, you know, what we think we should do, or what we think they should do. So we really sat down and listened to them, listened to what their needs are, what their wants are, what their fears are, what their concerns are. And then we sat down and we moved forward in that, in making a plan that we think could help benefit them. So, that being said, I'll turn it back over to Kristi.
We're really lucky to have some amazing staff from Des Moines County and being able to support. But how I'd like to wrap up is, I really like to try and, and connect this crime, or connect domestic violence to people that I'm talking with, because so many times we think of domestic violence as this kind of other thing. It happens to other people. It happens to somebody over there in that community. And, and the reality is, is that we know that one in three women are going to be battered in your lifetime. So that means that every person in this room knows somebody, whether it be a mother, a sister, a best friend, a neighbor, an aunt. Somebody in your life has been battered. And so the place that I always start, we're going to do a little visualization here. Think about the person who knows you better than anybody else in the world. Maybe your intimate partner, it may be your best friend, it may be a family member. But I want you to picture that person in your head. They know you inside and out. They know your strengths, they know your weaknesses. They know where you live, they have access to your home. They have access to your car, they have access to your money. They know where you are at any given moment. Maybe they know your colleagues, if you're working. They know how to humiliate you. They know what scares you, and they know who you love more than your own life. What would it take to keep you safe from that one person that knows everything about you if they were inclined to use violence to get what they wanted? I think that's the thing that most people don't always think about with domestic violence. Individuals who batter their intimate partner, it's a criminal behavior. And as criminals go, they have more access, they have more knowledge, they have more leverage than most criminals of other crimes. What would it take to keep you safe from that one person that knows everything about you? In Des Moines County, and primarily in Burlington, we served more than 300 individuals last year. Of those individuals, probably about 20 percent were children. And one of the things that Crystal alluded to is that we very much approach this from the perspective of, this is an individual who's having something done to them. There isn't anything you can do in an intimate relationship that makes it okay for your partner to hit you. Violence is not a natural consequence to anything in an intimate relationship. And so we approach it from that perspective, that this is an individual that is being harmed, and being harmed in the one place that they're supposed to be safe. And so, as an adult, they know what they want, they know what they need. Getting there is always the challenge. Over the, and I'm not going to date myself here, over the many years that I've done this work, I've met thousands and thousands of individuals who, they didn't want to end the relationship. This was somebody that they loved, they just wanted that person to stop hurting them. What would typically happen is that they would figure out over time that it wasn't going to stop. They would figure out over time that that person wasn't going to change, and that they were going to continue to escalate. And then they would have to make an alternative decision. Unfortunately, what we also know is that, on average, a batter will stalk their intimate partner for two years after they leave. So when we ask that question, "Why do you stay?" When we ask that question, "Why did you go back?" Many times, the answer to that is confusion, pain, hopes and desires for something that may or may not happen. And also, "I need to figure out how to get through today. So maybe today I go back until I can get a few more resources together. Maybe today I go back so my partner won't kidnap my children and leave, and I won't know where they're at. Maybe I'll go back because today that's all I can handle." And we're happy to answer any questions, but we just wanted to take a few minutes to share kind of the philosophy of how we do what we do, and why we approach things the way that we do. I think that domestic violence, that question of "Why does she stay?" is such an easy question to answer, and our social environment has been taught to ask that question, rather than to ask the question, "Why does somebody matter?" Thank you. We want to say thank you again for all of your support. We truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down.
God bless you and your work.
I'm sorry?
God bless you and your work.
Thank you, very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Your Honor, I have the last proclamation. Whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens, and the one that most direct daily impact upon its residents. City government is administered for and by its citizens, and is dependent upon public commitment too, in the understanding of its many responsibilities. City government officials and employees share the responsibility, pass along the understandings of public services and their benefits. And whereas City Week Iowa is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city governments in our lives, this week offers an opportunity, offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Iowa that they can shape and influence the level of government which is closest to its people. Whereas the city of Burlington employees have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different informational projects and events. And whereas City Week offers the important opportunity to convey to all its citizens of Burlington that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 10th through 14th, 2016, to be City Week in the city of Burlington, and encourage all citizens, city government officials, and employees to recognize and to celebrate this week by learning more about their city and its services. Signed and sealed this 3rd day of October, 2016, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor. And, oh, let's see, Sam Helmick and Ryan Freitag are here to receive this.
Wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk about City Day in the Park and City Week in general. It's been a wonderful experience for both of us. Ryan and I sit on the Pride Committee, you've probably heard a bit about of our work. City Day in the Park is the second annual opportunity for citizens to come and look at booths about every department in the city. So we're all here collaborating, letting you know, hey, we're here for you, these are our services, and let's connect. Do you have anything you want to talk to us about? Do you have any questions about our services? Do you know how the water gets cleaned? Do you know how long you can keep a library book? Do you know how the roads get paved? Let's chat about it. But it's also a lot of fun. We have our mayor come to City Day in the Park Week, and he plays games with us. There's face painting, there's bounce houses. I don't get to do the bounce houses, but I get to do the games, it's a lot of fun. And then there'll be candy, and then, let's see, what else? Candy, cotton candy, popcorn, soda. I'm thinking about the important things to me, is there anything I'm missing, though?
I don't think so.
Oh, there's a half-mile race, too. So for adults and for kids. So once you eat all that cotton candy, run it off, it's a lot, it's a lot of fun.
But you're focusing on fun things, you lost me on that.
See, I worked for the city, I have for like 10 years, and it is a lot of fun, and it does a lot of good. But my favorite part is getting to connect with the citizens, and kind of talk about what we do, and connect, and get ideas from them, and serve together. I'm sorry, you just...
An additional note is, is it is great to come together with the citizens, but it also, I see relationships created and cultivated through the employees, getting together and, and, and talking, you know, when they, they wouldn't normally talk, getting to see each other. We're broken up so much, it's really hard to, to find a unified spot and, and talk. So it's, it's great to do that, too, with the employees.
So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next, we have two Mayor's Awards. I'm sorry. Four Mayor's Awards. And actually, I seen one, I'm not sure if he's got to get out of here or not. Well, let me do last week's first. This first gentleman, he was recommended to me by somebody that's got their ear to the ground. And we just have to recognize tonight Larry. So, be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your positive attitude, volunteerism, and commitment to families and children help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. This was given on September 19th, but we're going to give it to you tonight. This Mayor's Award is presented to Mr. Larry Durth. Would you please come on down?
If I could, Mayor, I'd like to add, Larry Durth's been involved with boy scouting for a good number of years. As a matter of fact, it's 40 years that he's been involved in scouting. And he's had many, 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 many boys go, go through the programs with him. Larry's a very humble, very humble man. He told me when I stopped by his house, and telling me he was getting this award, that he, he doesn't like being recognized. So, he, he may or may not have too much to say tonight, but he's a great guy, and I appreciate him being a part of the community.
I don't have much to say, but I like to work with kids, they're fun. I like to work with them, better than do the adults.
Amen.
It's easier to control, and you can have a great time with them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This next gentleman, um, actually, I'll let you, I'll let you share with that, let you share something on that, too, before I read this.
Chuck Seigman's going to be the next recipient. Chuck came to me three or four weeks ago and informed me that we had a, one of the Queens coming to town. I don't know if it was a Mississippi Queen or Delta Queen, but at the time, there was a boat coming, a lot of people coming. And he said that the, the trees looked pretty bad in the first, in the, between Main Street and, and 3rd Street on Jefferson. And he had always taken care of them in the past, and he wanted to know, he wouldn't let me know that he was going to take care of them again. And he wanted to know if I could give him some assistance. I said, "No, I couldn't give him any assistance," but I gave him a big pat on the back for doing it. But Chuck has been doing this for years. And these trees were supposed to be in place for about 20 years, they've been there 30 years now. And it's because of the efforts that he's made over the years to keep that, that particular block of Jefferson Street nice and neat and orderly, and in keeping the, the growth that grows under the trees at bay. I think if not, we'd have probably seen the city have to tear that area out and invest quite a bit of money in, in bringing it to a different state. And Chuck has, has been a volunteer for the community in many other ways. But this one is, kind of goes unnoticed, nobody, nobody sees it. They just see that there's a mess one day, and the mess is cleaned up the next. And it's, it's because of Chuck, and, and a young man, I believe, that he hires to help him do that. So Chuck, thank you.
Mayor? Let's make it official. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment and passion for this community helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On September 19th, issued on the 3rd of October, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mr. Chuck Seigman.
Would you please have a word, sir?
Thank you.
Didn't expect to make a comment, but I would like to say that I think Jefferson Street right now is looking better than it has in decades. The planters, which are being taken care of by Zizers, and made possible by one of the foundations, not sure, it was Witty or the Murray Foundation. I love the renaissance that's taking place in, on Jefferson Street right now. It's due to the work that you folks have done, and certainly some of the other people in the community that have made investments in the area. So thanks for everything that you've done. We're, things are looking up, it's looking up. Thank you.
All right. Most of the, most of the Mayor's Awards that I've given out so far have been to old fogies. I've got another one coming up here. I'm just teasing. But most of them have been older, and haven't been, had too many kids that, not that we don't have exceptional kids, but this is one that really stands out. Really excited to be giving this to you tonight, so. What happened was, just to give you a quick setup, some people were doing some vandalism. They were vandalizing our stop signs, can you imagine that, right here in Burlington? That's what I said. And Jacob wasn't happy about it either, stepped outside his house, and he saw that that had been done, wanted to do something about it, and tried to clean it all off. I don't know if he got it completely clean, but he, he gave it a champion's try. And when I grow up, I want to be just like you. So, be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your selflessness and commitment to this community and your neighborhood is admirable. People like you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On October 3rd, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mr. Jacob Cranston. Would you please come on down?
Man, I have to stand next to you, I'm just aware of how ugly I am. Appreciate you. Would you please come and have a word?
I don't have anything to say, but thank you.
There's a passage of scripture that says, "Train up a child on the way that they should go. When they get old, they won't depart from it." You know, that's not a promise, that's not a guarantee, but I'll tell you what, it's, it pretty much always comes to fruition, and you're doing a good job, you're doing a real good job, so keep it up. Glad to keep you in Burlington, stay here, we need you, all right? This, this last award, and then we'll, we'll move right on. It goes to, I've known this guy ever since he was, ever since he was a little cat. His dad, who was here, the old guy sitting next to him, taught me the tire trade. And I know, I owe, I hate to even give this credit away. I owe all the, all the knowledge. People still come in, they suck me up. People still come in, they suck me up. Hey, just talk me through this. I've got a, I've got an old little maker I need to change. Just talk me through it. There's no way that I'd be able to do that without your dad, Jeff, who, and your mom, Larry Joe, who is a fantastic person. Obviously, she's put up with Jeff, so anyways, you're a winner, always have been. You always have been. We're blessed to have you here, Burlington Police Department. You're a go-getter with a K-9 unit, all that you do with the help that you did to make the Boots and Badges Day. Everybody was saying that behind your back, how much work you put into that, so I hadn't forgotten. I was just going to milk it out and do it when I decided to. That's, that's the beauty of sitting behind this chair sometimes. I'm excited tonight to give this to you. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your positive attitude and commitment to your job and community, as well as your desire to be an overachiever, help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On October 3rd, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Jeff and Larry Joe's kid, Ryan Smith. Come on, come on down.
Ryan, he's such a cool guy. Man, we appreciate you, man.
I'm not one much for words, but I do appreciate this. Just going to take the K-9 program and head around and run with it, so hopefully make this community a little bit better.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're about to start our auction. I will let, for those of you that want to get on out of here, you can go on and get on out of here, and we'll start with the auction.
All matters listed under Item 1, consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council, will be enacted by one motion. Excuse me. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances miscellaneous, minutes in previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have three resolutions. The first resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2016 Third and Washington Parking Deck Repair Project. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2015 Division Street HMA Resurfacing Project. And the third is a resolution endorsing the Mason Road Trail Project. We also have two public hearings set for October 17th. First is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 2007, 2007 South Fifth Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. And the second is a consideration of an ordinance creating Chapter 38 Tree Advisory Board of the Burlington Municipal Code. We also have an appointment. Mayor Proton?
Low-Rent Housing Agency, Bill Palmer, Jr.
All right, so we thank you on that. As very many from the audience, I would like to have any of these items removed from the consent. I see none. Counsel?
We have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1, consent agenda.
Second.
Looked in second.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. We've got two auctions tonight. This is, it's for the consideration of a sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Publications been made in the hot guy, Mr. Tisland?
This is a property the city acquired through the abandoned building program and looking to sell tonight. For all, or I guess, conditions of the sale, similar to most of our sale of vacant homes, defective items shall be repaired as needed. Licensed plumber and electrician shall inspect and sign off that such items in the property meet or are brought up to code. Sidewalks and parking areas shall be, meet current code standards as necessary. All permits shall be received, and codes shall be met for applicable, for work as applicable in occupancy of the home. The purchaser shall maintain the property and yard and hold insurance on such property upon approval of sale by the council, with work initiated within 60 days and completed within 180 days of approval, within 180-day extension granted if progress is being made. Deed shall be transferred to the purchaser upon substantial completion of renovation of the home. The home on, at 209 Gunnison, located between Smith and Division on the west side of Gunnison. Kind of a brief summary of the home, built in 1921, approximately a little over 1,000 square feet on the main floor, lots 45 by 156. Off-street, potential parking from the alley, two bedrooms, one on the main floor, one full bath on the main floor, possible additional bedrooms if the home is remodeled. Cleanout, roof repairs, electrical HVAC is needed, plumbing repairs and wiring is needed, windows, doors, repairs as needed, general updates. We get these homes in a condition where they are vacant, so they do need to be rehabbed prior to occupancy, and that is expected of the purchaser, so.
Let's go ahead and get this, let's get this auction started. We don't, this is a property, we don't have, we haven't taken any bids on this property. We'd like to start all minimum purchases off at $500, since we don't have any names or anything. We're going to ask you for your initial bid, too. Please to come and give your name and address at the podium. So, for the property, locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, we have a $500 bid? I'll say not everybody at once.
How you doing, counsel? My name is Arthur Gordon. I live at 11464 Plank Road, Burlington, Iowa, and I'll put in a $500 offer.
Can you give me that now? What was that address?
11464 Plank Road, Burlington, Iowa.
Was it a bid of $5,000?
I still got to finish the other.
Oh, all right.
$500.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've got a bid of $500. Got a bid of $500. Do I have a bid of $1,000? Got a bid of $500? Do I, do I see? Well, I'll tell you what, everybody's so excited, smiles and whatnot, nobody's moving. Mrs. Vaughn? Oh, that's not your name anymore. Anybody? Do I have a bit of, do I have a bit of a 600? Do I have a $600 bid? Really? This fantastic property is going to go for $500. Do I have a $600 bid? Going once?
Tim Scott, 2016, South 15th, $600.
That's what I'm talking about. What was your, what was your bid, Mr. Scott? Mr. Scott's got a bid of 600. Mr. Gordon?
800.
Eight for Mr. Scott? $1,000 for Mr. Gordon. Do I have $1,100?
$1,100.
$1,100, 12? This is being televised, Art. Do I, you got $1,100, or do I, do I have 12? I got 12 for Mr. Gordon?
13.
13, Mr. Scott? 14, Mr. Gordon?
15.
15, Mr. Scott? 16, Mr. Gordon? It's like a tennis match, you know? 16, Mr. Gordon?
I got 16.
16, Mr. Gordon, going once?
17.
17, Mr. Scott? 18, Mr. Gordon? 18, Mr. Gordon? 18, Mr. Gordon, going once? 18, Mr. Gordon, going twice? Sold to Mr. Gordon. What was that, $2,800? Man, that's a lovely property. I'm really surprised that it went so low. I think you're, I think you're writing, I think you're writing those down? Is Timmy doing those?
He is.
You just stay down there, Mr. Scott. Don't worry about us.
Well, first, we need to close the hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Wilson? Aye. Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Okay. Your Honor, I move to approve the sale. How are you going to do that, En?
We need to, we need to introduce a resolution first. That was correct.
Yeah. Are you going to do that, or you want me to? I move that we approve the sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Can I second?
Second.
Your Honor, I move to amend Exhibit C of Resolution approving sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, New York County, Iowa. The property to be sold to Arthur Gordon of 11464 Plank Road of Burlington for $1,800.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
This is on the motion to amend.
Right on.
Wilson? Aye. Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, now, let's vote as amended.
Wilson? Aye. Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Could have saved some time just by starting off with $1,800, just throwing that out there. But anyways, all right. This is, we've got one more property for sale tonight. This is, this is a time set for hearing for consideration of the sale of property locally known as 915 North Central Avenue, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Publications been made in the hot guys prescribed. Mr. Tisland?
Same conditions as previous sale. Defective items shall be repaired as needed. Sidewalks and parking shall be improved as necessary. Permits and codes shall be met for work and occupancy of the home. Purchaser shall maintain the property and hold insurance. Again, work started within 60 days, completed within 180, with extension possible, and quick claim deed transferred to the purchaser upon substantial completion of the home. I have a summary of this home as well. Again, one we acquired through the abandoned building program, built in 1921, approximately 1,500 square feet, main floor, lot is 45 by 123, with off-street parking from the alley. Has two bedrooms on the main floor, with a large room upstairs that could be a potential bedroom or remodeled into possible two bedrooms and one full main floor bath. Again, repairs as needed, plumbing, electrical, wiring, roof repairs are needed on this home as well, with windows flooring and general updates and repairs that are required by the purchaser of the home.
All right.
We did have one bid submitted previously on this from Roger Thomas of 907 North Central, adjacent property owner, for $500.
Okay. We've got, is Roger in the house? That's what I'm talking about. Okay, we've got a $500 minimum bid from Roger Thomas. So, I'm going to ask, if you have not put a bid on this, if it's your first time bidding, please come to the podium, give us your name and your address on your initial bid, and then we'll just, we'll just take your, we'll take a hand raise on that. So, opening the bid up now, this is for the property locally known as 915 North Central Avenue. Bids open up at $500. Do I have a?
Tim Scott, 2017, South 15th, $5,000.
We've got a bid of $5,000. Do I have a bid of $5,500? Do I have $5,500? Do I have $51? Do I have $51? Got a bid of $5,000? Got a bid of $5,000? Do I have a bid of $51? I got a bid of $51? Mr. Gordon at $51? I've got a bid of $51. Do I have $52? I've got a bid at $51. Do I have $52? $51 for Mr. Gordon?
$52.
$51, $52 for Mr. Scott? I have $52 with Mr. Scott? Do I have $53? I have $52 with Mr. Scott? Do I have a $53? It's fantastic property, y'all. You really don't want to miss out on this opportunity. I need to tell you. Do I have anybody else at $53? I've got Mr. Scott at 50, at 52, 52. Do I have a $53?
Arthur did.
Mr. Gordon, 53?
54.
54, Mr. Scott? 55, Mr. Gordon? $5,500, Mr. Gordon? Do I have a $56?
$56.
I've got $56 with Mr. Scott? $56 with Mr. Scott? Do I have a $57? $57 with Mr. Gordon?
58.
58 with Mr. Scott? 6 with Mr. Gordon?
65.
65 with Mr. Scott? Somebody recognize the value? 60, 61? 81? He's got 71, Mr. Gordon?
72.
72 with Mr. Scott? 73 with Mr. Gordon? 75 with Mr. Scott? 76 with Mr. Gordon? 76 with Mr. Gordon?
77.
77 with Mr. Scott? 77 with Mr. Scott? These are a few hundred dollars we're talking about, people. 78 with Mr. Gordon? 78 with Mr. Gordon? 78 with Mr. Gordon?
8.
8 with Mr. Scott? You came this far, you know, you might as well see what color your hair is. We got 8 with Mr. Scott? 8 with Mr. Scott? 81 with Mr. Gordon? 81 with Mr. Gordon? 81 with Mr. Gordon, going once? 81 with Mr. Gordon, going twice? Sold to Mr. Gordon, $8,100. Mr. Scott, come on back up here. Well done. There are more ways than one. Do you got, are you reading that one, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay. We got Art at $8,100.
Resolution approving sale of property locally known as 915.
We need to close the hearing first.
Motion to close first.
Second.
Let's vote.
Wilson? Aye. Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, motion, resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 915 North Central Avenue, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Your Honor, I have a motion to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 915 North Central Avenue, City of Burlington, New York County. Property being sold to Art Gordon of 14964 Plank Road.
114.
114.
64.
64. Plank Road, Burlington, Iowa, in the amount of $8,100. Can I get a second?
Can I get a second, please?
Second. We'll vote on the motion to amend. Wilson? Aye. Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, and now can we vote as amended?
Wilson? Aye. Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
All right. Nice habits. Sold to Mr. Gordon. Okay, next, we have a consideration of an ordinance rezoning of the property located at 3107. Okay, next, we have a consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at thirty-one oh seven South Fourteenth Street from R-one Single Family Residential to R-four Multi-Family Residential Zoning District with conditions. Can I get a second?
Yeah, this property, we had a request from the owner to rezone from, to allow for duplex condominium development on this property. It's currently zoned R-one Single Family. Directly to the east is R-four Multi-Family Residential. It is, does have R-one to the northwest and south as well. The conditions on this property are as follows. Land use allowed for the property shall be single-family or two-family duplex dwellings. Maximum of two structures shall be allowed on the lot, four total units maximum. Under the R-one standard, only single-family properties could be built on the lot. Under R-four, multiple-family dwellings could be built on the lot, and multiple buildings can. Conditions restrict this down to the same density as R-one standards, nine thousand square feet per unit. It's a thirty-six thousand square foot lot, so based on that and our zoning code for R-one, it could have up to four units as an R-one zoning district, and the conditions maintain that density for the lot. The planning commission held a public hearing on September twentieth regarding the rezoning of the property and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the requested rezoning. The approval was based on the surrounding use of land in the area, which includes single-family, two-family, and multifamily. The conditions of the rezoning that limit the use of land to compatible density and allowing the future, following the future land use map designation as low-density residential, which includes single-family and two-family dwellings. They stated intention was to develop two duplex condominium structures similar to off of Pawnee, just to the north, off of Fourteenth Street. Again, surrounding land uses, there's a three-plex townhouse directly across the street to the east, and apartment buildings on Kestner Street with primarily single-family. In the rest of the neighborhood with some duplexes on Mohawk and off of Pawnee as well, so they would like to construct two duplex structures similar to those that are currently on Pawnee at this location.
Questions or concerns, anybody from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Okay.
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the property locally located at thirty-one oh seven South Fourteenth Street from R-one Single Family Residential to R-four Multi-Family Residential Zoning District with conditions.
Second.
Move on second. Let's take it for vote, Kathleen.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moving right along, number four. It's a consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-nine ten Madison Avenue from R-one Single Family Residential to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District with a planned unit development overlay zone. Mr. Tisland?
This is again a request to rezone the property, the former client center located at the corner of Kestner and Madison Street from R-one to C-one Limited Commercial with a planned unit development overlay. With the intention to develop the property as a hotel-type use on the upper floors, office, and restaurant on the main floor of the building. Our zoning code requirements for C-one, C-two, and R-four all have, allow different aspects of that, but they don't all allow the same aspects, so the PUD overlay allows for specified uses within this property. Wherein it restricts the uses to residential use categories, which includes multifamily residential apartment-type uses, also hotel or motel use, commercial office uses, which is somewhat self-explanatory, medical clinics, doctors' offices, architects', just insurance offices, general office-type uses, as well as restaurant uses. So those are the three categories of uses that would be allowed within this PUD property. The planning commission had a public hearing on September twentieth regarding the rezoning and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the requested rezoning. The recommendation was based on the condition that the future, future land use map is amended to neighborhood mixed use for the described property. Based on the land uses allowed within the PUD, the limited reuse options for the property under its current R-one zoning designation, and the minimized impact on the surrounding neighborhood with the land uses allowed under the proposed zoning ordinance. They really tried to balance what were appropriate uses for the area and redevelopment options for the property based on the applicant's desires, also with concerns to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighborhood as well, and they felt this PUD ordinance and the land uses allowed would do that, so. Again, the PUD primarily is there to state what land uses are allowed for the property, and those were based off of what was requested from the applicant, so.
Anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
Just glad that we came to some sort of a understanding.
Okay, can I get motion to close?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I move for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located at twenty-nine ten Madison Avenue from R-one Single Family Residential to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District with a planned unit development overlay zone.
Second.
Move on second. Let's take it to vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-four Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland?
This is continuation of updates of our building codes for the city of Burlington. Chapter one fifty-four is the residential code. Currently, it cites the two thousand twelve International Residential Code as being the code adopted by the city of Burlington, so this amendment brings it to the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Residential Code. And also, under Sections repealed, one fifty-four point oh two, deletes chapters, takes out the deletion of Chapters twenty-five, six, seven, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. So that the residential code can be used as a one-code book for single-family and two-family dwellings for electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and general residential construction, so that developers, as well as our inspectors, don't have to bring multiple codebooks for this type of development. It can all be referenced under one codebook. It contains all the requirements for electrical, plumbing, mechanical in this book, so they felt this was easiest way to utilize the book for our own inspection, but also for developers that are doing this type of construction. They're not looking to find the requirements out of multiple codebooks, it's just in one book, so. So again, going to the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Residential Code with that one minor addition, or deletion from our city code section.
Anybody from the audience with questions or concerns? Okay, counsel?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I move for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter one fifty-four Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a consideration of an ordinance amending Section one fifty point zero seven affecting numbers of the Chapter one fifty building numbering of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland?
This is an update to our building numbering section of our code to be in line with our fire code standards for the dimensions of the building numberings on buildings, the four-inch height and a half-inch stroke width. This is in gearing up towards the fire department, looking to address the numbering issue or addressing issues throughout the community, and wanna be similar in our city code to what the fire, international fire code states, so that it's not confusing of interpretation or enforcement, it's all the same under both codes, so this change brings our city code in line with the fire code standards.
Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? You're a lovely audience tonight. Counsel?
I just wanna comment how important this is. The, we've had the police department out, or fire department out, visiting with folks and trying to encourage them to put their addresses on the side of their house where it's visible from the street. It's important for the police department, important for the fire department, important for the, for the streets department, and, and the trash department. They all require, are required from time to time to go to your homes. The only way they're gonna know that they're there is if they see your, your addresses on your, on your, on your homes. And I know from being a business person that's in the service industry, I go to many, many homes and I see that they don't have their, their numbers up. And it's, I know it's difficult for me, but in an emergency situation, it's gotta be very concerning, so. This, this simply changes from a three-inch to a four-inch high numbering system that you have to put on the side of your house now, but the important part is get your, get your numbers up. I know out in the county, since they, they implemented the nine-one-one program, it's, it's so simple to go out and find a home out in the county, much easier than what it is a lot of times in town. And, and a lot of people going through their minds saying, well idiot, if it's five thirty-four on one side, five thirty-six on the other, then it must be five thirty-five in the center. That's not always the case. We've got streets in this community where the numbers go from five thirteen to five seventeen to five twenty-one, and then back to five fifteen. And it's, and it, it happens on more than one street in the community, and why it's that way, I don't know, but it's, it did happen, so not, not all streets or, or blocks of streets have numbers that are consecutive. So please, for the sake of your safety and, and to make it an advantage for the, for our first responders, put your numbers up, please. That's all I have.
Okay. Get off my soapbox. Motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance amending Section one five zero point zero seven affixing numbers of Chapter one fifty building numbering of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Let's vote on it, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
This is the one that's, yeah, okay. So I just start here. I have ordinance, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance, an ordinance rezoning the property located on the west side of South Main Street between Maple Street and Spruce Street from M-one Light Industrial to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
This again, rezoning requested initiated by the property at the corner of Angular and Main Street, Transitions DMC, looking to put a homeless shelter in this property under the M-one zoning classification that does not allow residential. C-one does allow residential in the upper story or back half of the property, which meets their needs. Looking at other properties in this area, C-one would be more appropriate zoning, so it eliminated some of the non-conforming uses on Main Street. After bringing this forward, the property at the corner of Spruce and Main Street came forward, the realtor for the site, and stated they still had some interest in maintaining the M-one standards based on some interest in the property potentially for repair-type business. So we would recommend removing the bottom two, southern two properties from the ordinance and just maintaining the, the properties as shown in yellow on, on this map through this rezoning to C-one Limited Commercial. Again, the planning commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning based on the future land use map and the current planned uses of the properties as commercial and residential.
Is there anybody that has any questions or comments from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
How do we amend? Do we have to have an amendment?
Motion to replace Exhibit A and Exhibit B of ordinance rezoning the property located on the west side of South Main Street between Maple Street and Spruce Street from M-one Light Residential to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District by excluding lot numbers one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine, and one sixty in original City of Burlington, DeMoyne County, Iowa.
Second.
On the amendment?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, and as amended?
No, I have another motion.
Motion to amend, to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located on the west side of South Main Street between Maple Street and Spruce Street from M-one Light Industrial to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for the final adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property located on the west side of South Main Street between Maple Street and Spruce Street from M-one Light Industrial to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
And that's as amended?
Yes.
Yep.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
All right, so.
Now we're gonna need to vote on the original motion. As amended. Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
As amended?
I have a resolution approving the final plan of the Roy Boggan subdivision.
Second.
This is a one-lot subdivision located in the city's Two Mile Subdivision Review jurisdiction, so it is located in DeMoyne County, within two miles of the city of Burlington. This is creating one lot separating off Homestead from the remaining property. This home on the property separating it off from the remaining farmland. So again, one lot, not creating, or not requiring any utility extension at the site and meeting our minor subdivision classification. This county already approved this subdivision, but since it's in the Two Mile area, the city has to review and consider approval as well, so. This would be a minor subdivision and just requesting to split this one lot off from the remaining property.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any issues, comments, or concerns? See none? Counsel? Good. Let's vote on.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving agreement with Matson Marine Service, Inc., for riverfront lease and mooring agreement.
Second.
This is a, we've had an agreement with Matson for, I don't know how many, how many years, but it's up for renewal. Terms are fairly comparable to what we've had in this in the past. It was written with five-year periods with, with renewals the last time as well. The amounts that are in here for payments are comparable to what was here in the past. If you notice, throughout here, you've got wording in here that what we're providing them is granting mooring, docking, and working. them is granting mooring, docking, and mortgage privileges to Matson. That's at parcels one and one A. Very similar with parcel two, providing mooring privileges at that location and then mooring privileges adjacent to the southeastern channel side of parcel three. The period of the agreement, it's written here as a five-year agreement with two optional five-year renewals unless sooner terminated in accordance with provisions. The rent amounts are listed in there. For the first five years, the annual payment is $19,567, which goes to $22,697 in the second five-year period. And then the subsequent or final five-year period contemplated in the agreement would be an annual payment of $26,328. In addition, Matson's responsible for taxes, license, and other fees that come due on the property. Buildings on that site are Matson's, it's noted in there, in order to keep them, those parcels free from nuisance. And we've got a couple of issues that we need to address with. I think we've over time, a couple of times, had to deal with barges and we have one that's there that we need to get addressed now. We'd also note that the document has, near the end in section 10 allows, the city can terminate before the expiration of its term, either at its sole discretion for a public purpose or for cause, and gives two different procedures there. If we have a public purpose for any of these sites that would require, would require us to terminate the contract because we had another need for the property, we, all we have to do is provide six months' notice.
Will that address the concern that the Riverfront Advisory Committee?
I think it does. I think it does. It allows, if there was something else that were to come up in any of those three areas, where we have a defined public purpose for the use of that site that would impair the ability to do this at the same time, yes, we can do that with a notice provision. They also have a six-month opt-out in item 11. They can terminate without cause with that same type of a six-month notice. So it, both parties have that same type of provision written into this agreement. Those are the basic terms that are included in here.
Questions from the audience? Council?
No, just, I think that six-month, the terms for six months for being able to, you know, terminate the contract is important, and I think that's something fair for the Riverfront Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I was, I was prepared tonight to ask to amend to a lesser term, but since Jim pointed that out and I hadn't read the entire contract, I'm comfortable with knowing that that's available because their, the Riverfront Advisory Board's concern was that we're going to be doing some riverfront protection, the flood wall and the like, and they were concerned that with that longer lease, if we needed to get into that property, that it was going to be an issue. But it's, this obviously eliminates that issue, so I'm good with it.
Okay. Let's move on, Kathleen.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, good deal. We're at the end of our meeting. This time we will entertain comments from the audience. You've been such a wonderful audience. Is there anybody that has comments tonight?
My name is Don Harder. I live at 1018 Monticello Drive in Burlington. I'm going to give you something to look at before I start talking. A number of years ago, the city of Burlington implemented a policy of removing junk or inoperable vehicles from backyards. I think it was an excellent idea. It was, for a while, pursued fairly vigorously. I think it did a tremendous amount of benefit to communities that have had a lot of vehicles sitting in their backyard. This came to my attention due to the fact that about four years ago, I purchased a property on Grove Street that had a problem with the next door neighbor that kind of had a running junkyard in the backyard. I came down, this has been almost five years ago, and tried to pursue some action through the nuisance abatement office to have some of those vehicles either cleaned up or made operable, or at least to comply with the city codes in regard to having them covered and on hard surface and so on. To my joy, last fall, some of the items were removed from this property. I came back in March of this year and found another vehicle that I just gave you a picture of sitting in this backyard. This vehicle is totally inoperable. It looks that it's appeared someone tried to drive around the telephone pole with it.
Is it still here today?
Yes, it is. I just came, matter of fact, I just came by there on my way down here. It has not been tagged, there's no tags on the windows or anything indicating that it should be moved or anything. That vehicle has been there for now four months. I have come down on a regular basis, almost every two weeks, complaining about it to the nuisance abatement officials and haven't really had a great deal of success, as you can see, because...
Are you positive there's not a tag on it?
I am positive. I walked right up to the vehicle tonight.
Is it?
Yeah. And then, just simply to bolster my argument a little bit, I started driving around Burlington and looking, and I was totally aghast at how many vehicles are like this or in backyards and wherever on people's property. I counted on one occasion, on North Hill and on South Hill, within a two-block area, I came up with seven to eight vehicles that had weeds growing around them, some of them were up on cement blocks, they were, just like this one, there's grass growing around it, et cetera, et cetera. I think it really deteriorates from the quality of life in Burlington, especially, you know, with the people that are owning the properties close to these that are trying to take good care of their properties. I try to take good care of my properties and I hope everyone else does. But when we have something like this, I think it's really unfortunate. Now, I know on your website, you still indicate the fact that you really want people to clean up these abandoned vehicles because I've read it or seen it on TV several times on your website. I know after talking to a couple of the councilmen, you were kind of surprised that this was going on, and I think maybe not so surprised because you're probably around the community as much or more than I am. And I'd really like to see us take a, I shouldn't say an aggressive stance, but just a proactive stance in regard to seeing if we can't get some of these properties cleaned up, because I think it makes a tremendous amount of difference to the people that own the properties next door, to the neighborhoods. When you walk down or drive by a neighborhood and you see two or three vehicles sitting in the yard, on cement blocks, grass growing up around them, some of them have parts missing, body parts missing and so on, I think it really detracts from the neighborhoods. So I'm just bringing this to your attention. I did mention to the mayor in regard to this property, it is, it is still in the same condition it was in. I've been trying to get some action on this for four months and prior to that, for almost five years on this property, and it hasn't been very successful. So I just, I don't know, I'd be willing to entertain any questions if you have them. Be more than happy to give you the address of my property, you can drive by and see where this is, but I don't think I should really announce it on the TV, but I'd be willing to do that.
Well, if they can ask me, I know where it's at, I can tell them.
Yeah.
Did you guys have any questions for Mr. Harder?
Thank you, Don.
Eric, did you get a report on that or?
Yeah, well, he had sent a letter, I think his note, it was due last week, I asked him today, and he said he hadn't gotten by today, he'll get by first thing in the morning and it'll be towed, so his deadline was last week.
Okay. I had talked with the nuisance about it, Eric was going to put something together for us, and apparently he's got somebody going by tomorrow morning, too.
What is the actual policy? In other words, if someone calls in in regard to a concern, I'm sure the, I assume the inspectors go out and look at the property or look at the supposed problem. If there is a problem that's identified, what, do they, are they, do they put a sticker on it, and then how long do they have to respond to that, or?
I'm not sure how. Each one, each situation's different, but Eric can probably explain it better. There's some that, you know, can get immediate response and others takes 30 days or 60 days or, we've got one that we're dealing with on the corner of Washington and Eighth Street that the city attorney's involved, nuisance has been involved, citations have been issued for trespass, and it's unwillingness by the person that owns the property to do anything. And literally, the city's done everything they can, they can do to this point. It's now in the, in the hands of the courts, and it's waiting for the courts to settle the matter for us, one way or the other. And I'm not sure about this particular situation, but that's what these guys deal with every day in the nuisance department is.
I know the police are very vigilant in regard to, you know, if a property or vehicles left on the side of the road, you know, they normally, within 24 or 48 hours, I believe, have a tag on the window indicating that something has to be done to remedy the problem.
Yeah, when it's in city right of way, it's a little easier to deal with, and it's, it actually, the police department can deal with it where if it's sitting on private property, it's a nuisance department issue, so, and it's, and they just have different ways that they've got to, got to handle it. I'm with you, Don. I'm frustrated as hell that we have to put up with this all over town. I was by a house the other day that had seven trailers, three of them parked in the city right of way, and four of them parked in the, in the back. There was, I don't know where he parked his car. He wasn't home at the time, but it's, I'm seeing it all over town, and it's, I don't know if we got enough manpower to deal with, with, you know, with all of it. Public education is about the only thing we can do or take a really tough stance on it and start hauling everything inside. I don't know, it's, depends on what the...
I think the neighbors would appreciate a more aggressive stance.
I know, I would.
You know.
I don't know if my companions would.
If you lived right next door to these, you would.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Anybody else in the audience, questions or concerns? Okay. You're a lovely audience tonight. Mr. Tisland?
No.
Uh, councilwoman?
Well, so Friday was the wine walk, and it was, there was a lot going on. There were so many people there. I know that they had printed out, I think, 700 maps, and they were all gone, so I don't know.
He had over 800.
Yeah, it was amazing. Oh, so, just, you missed out. The sip, taste, and stroll. I call it the wine walk.
Sip, taste, and stroll. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman?
I wanted to touch on that, too. I didn't get a chance, I was working, but all week long downtown has been swamped. There was...
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Thursday, they had a special event down at, hopefully yours, and then the, and then the farmer's market, and it was just packed, there were people everywhere. I mean, people parked clear up on Washington Street, clear up, or parked clear up by martinis coming down to Jefferson Street. And it just seems to be getting busier and busier and busier downtown every day. And the new restaurant that's in brewery that's opening on the 10th is just amazing. The inside is, is just, just beautiful in there. They've done a fabulous job. I think that's going to bring a lot more traffic downtown, too, so it's a, it's a great place to be, be almost all the time anymore, so.
The only thing I've got is, yeah, I was just going to say, we had the ribbon cutting at the new gas station, at the New Hy-Vee Gas Station, and it's a, it's a new deal, you need to stop there and get some gas. I don't know if there's any other gas stations like that anywhere close by, but you can, you can pick what flavor you want, you get gasoline with cinnamon, nutmeg, you know, a little splash of vanilla.
That's the coffee bar.
Yeah, well, okay, my fault. But you can get 85 or 15, or, they've got it broke down. But anyways, we're pretty excited about that with that partnership. And we also did have the ribbon cutting, first new building down on Jefferson Street in over 40 years, which is hopefully yours, and is now hopefully ours. And, man, nobody got that joke down there either. All right, you know, I'm going to quit while I'm ahead, which I've not, so I'll quit. Beer, protein.
I see this note here, two weeks from today starts the fall leaf collection. Am I correct on that?
Sounds right.
Two weeks. You get, you get seven chances to put out your leaves, so part of the cleanup that we can do in our city. Please don't just rake your leaves into the street and let them lay there. Please.
City manager, who we happen to love and appreciate dearly.
All right, I was going to mention, Tim, the shop right over here, too. I can't think of the restaurant's name right.
Crafted?
The Bistro?
The Bistro.
Crafted.
They, they, they're fairly busy, too, and it's just, it is neat to see the different activities with different places that have opened up. I don't know, Nick, if you've given an update on the snow plows yet?
No.
Oh, this is fun. Originally, just to, we were trying to get something accomplished with Burlington High School and...
Yeah, things, things didn't quite mesh out, so...
We were able to work something on Great River Christian School in its place.
That's a little too much.
Well, I think it adjusted.
So worked out three plows with Great River Christian School, you probably saw something maybe in the Hawkeye and on KBR. Yeah, I just dropped them off. They happened so quick that these guys did a fantastic job on it. I couldn't thank them enough for doing what they did. This, this next one, I think, is absolutely awesome.
Wow.
I couldn't believe that, you know, elementary through high school kids worked on this.
Elementary school kids worked on that?
Elementary through high school.
They worked on it.
So I'm going to work on trying to get some clear coat, and one of my guys has a, has a gun, try and preserve that as long as possible. Because once it gets into the snow, that paint will, it'll last a few snowstorms, but...
How many total plows are getting done on this big old deal?
We, we just did three for this year. I had planned to do 13, but things with the high school didn't quite work out, so hopefully this turns into, this is a good product to show what, what can be done in the future and have an application process next year, get, you know, get the other schools, Notre Dame, maybe even West Burlington if they'd like to, involved. So I think it's pretty cool. We're going to have this on display at City Week in the park that Saturday, and then I've also talked a couple of my guys into entering it into the parade, so.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that'll be a pretty neat little thing.
It's cool. They did a good job on that.
I cannot, I, when I walked up and saw that, I could not believe how amazing it looked. They did a little extra stuff to it since then, but, no, they look pretty awesome.
I'm still glad we got something worked out for somebody to be able to put some artwork on there.
Yeah, I, I couldn't have asked for, you know, a nicer, nicer set of snow plows. Since I'm up here, I also wanted to let you know that last week, the barriers for the HESCOs, for the flooding, they went about as smooth as you could go. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up.
I, we had several volunteers down there, and I don't know all their names right offhand, but I'll get those to them, get to you.
Good.
I couldn't, you know, they did a fantastic job last week, and I think the key of it was that I stayed out of the way. Didn't tell them what to do, so, no. Any of, anything else? For me?
No, just, just want to throw out there again, just a big thank you to everybody that, you get those names, too, Nick, but...
Yeah, I will.
Everybody that worked so hard, and they, they were hustling, no complaint, I mean, working great together, it was just, we got some great employees, we really do. I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
Yeah, they, they had those barriers up in no time. I mean, I was amazed, literally. I went down, went down in the morning, there was nothing but piles of sand and pallets full of HESCO barriers. Went back that evening and they were surrounded. Buildings were surrounded, so.
Timing helped an awful lot, speaking with, with folks. They had more time to plan, they had more time to get it done before the water was coming up.
up, and it, I think it makes a big difference not to be walking through water when you're trying to set up HESCOs. They, they had some really good efforts, both from the public works department, Parks Department supplied several folks down there, and that their, their ability to work together across departments is, is tremendous. I don't know if anyone came over from sewer this time or not.
Solid waste deals, some sandbags, some public works.
So... So, solid waste was involved, too. So, it's neat to see the, the different groups working together and, and being an overall team. Very appreciative for that. And as, it's been mentioned, we do wanna get the names of the folks, don't wanna say one name and not get all, all of the names who've been involved. We've got some folks who come, when we have events like this happen, they, they're there anytime that, that we're doing something, and, and their help and assistance is greatly appreciated. Reminder again, it's already been mentioned multiple times, City Day, Saturday, October fifteenth.
Yeah.
The one thing that I would put out there, are you gonna be at the, the park this time? You gotta take time to listen to Don, so make sure you take time to listen to Don. You will learn so much about how our sewer system works, it is phenomenal. And I'll be on the radio show this Wednesday, so.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, City Day's fifteenth. I, I think that's it. The only other thing I want to say is, again, come visit us in beautiful, beautiful historic Burlington, you can get married, Rob Sussman did.
Can I get a motion? Move to adjourn.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Thank you.
Good night.
Hey, work.